All right, welcome everyone. This is the regular city council meeting for Minnetrista, December 7th. It is seven o'clock and I've called the meeting to order. Our first order of business is going to ask, I'm gonna ask Shannon Bruce to say pledge of allegiance this evening. Ms. Bruce?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to introductions. So in roll call, we'll start with the council. Obviously, Ms. Bruce is here, but I'll call your name again, Ms. Bruce.
I'm here.
All right, Mr. Trumperland.
Here.
Mr. Molitor.
Here.
Ms. Mortenson.
Here.
And I'm Lisa Whalen, the mayor. Next, we'll move on to city staff. We have city engineer Allison Fousky.
I am here.
And Adam Gabois.
Here.
All right, both with WSB. Next, we have our city clerk Chris Lindquist.
I am here.
Director of Administration Ellie Paulos.
I'm here.
Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
Chief of Police Paul Falls.
Here.
Our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven Ron Beatty.
Here.
Our community development director David Abel.
I am here.
And Finance Director Brian Grimm.
I'm here.
And City Administrator Mike Veroni.
I am here.
Have I missed anyone? I don't think I have. So with that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? I believe we will be removing under consent agenda items number N and O. We can either do that now or we can do it later. Either way, I'll just remove them now at this time. We will be moving those to January. That is the park commission appointments and the planning commission appointment. So we'll be doing that in January. With that, are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none then. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Um, just.
Pam, okay? All right, is there a second?
I have, I'm an applicant for a project. I've asked if my item being removed from the consent agenda didn't.
No, it's not been, it's not been, I'm, hold on. I have a motion on the table, so I'm gonna have to ask for a second. Is there a second to the motion to approve the agenda?
This is John T. L. Second.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda with that, with the removal of consent agenda items number N and O. Those in favor will signify with aye. All those in favor signify with aye. Ms. Mortenson? Aye. Mike Molitor?
Aye.
John Trumperland?
Aye.
Shannon Bruce?
Aye.
And Lisa Whalen? Aye. And I believe the gentleman, is this Evan Carlson?
Uh, yes, well, I have an.
Okay, wait, hold on. I'm gonna have to interrupt you here. What I'm, the only, you are gonna be able to talk under persons to be heard if you'd like to address the council? If you can hold off until then?
You bet.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to special presentations. We have our public comment this evening on our 2021 budget. So first, we're gonna do an overview and a presentation, and I believe Mr. Grimm is going to do that. And afterwards, we will open it up to the public if they wish to make any comments. So Brian, I'm gonna hand it over to you right now.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman. What I'm gonna do is, you saw there was a lot of documents in your packet, obviously, that go hand in hand with the budget. I think sixty-six or so for this agenda item. So what I'm gonna do is mainly focus on pages five through sixteen of the packet, which is the PowerPoint. Obviously, if there's any residents here to talk about it in public commentary, if the council wants to ask any questions, that's obviously a hundred percent good or fine. You know, pages three and four were sort of the memo outlining some of the highlights of the budget. I'm sure you all have probably had a chance to read that. So I think everyone's okay with that. I'm gonna jump into, I'll be a ten-minute presentation here, and then we can open it up to council and the, any residents that wanna speak.
All right, thank you, Brian, go ahead.
Yep, so as stated, it starts on page five. Tonight is, you know, the public comment. And probably a couple of comments right off the bat is, before I get into the presentation, is one, I myself have not received any calls, you know, regarding the city's budget or tax levy myself so far. So I just, I think that's always good to at least share if I have received or if any staff have received any. So I have not to that effect. And then, secondly, one thing when we worked with the, you know, the county provided some information. Obviously, everyone got their truth and taxation statements. I guess now it's the public comment statements. I'm sort of old school, I like to call it truth and taxation. But basically, roughly seventy-five percent of Minnetrista residents, when they see their total tax bill, are seeing a decrease. So that's obviously school, city, county, and other taxing districts. So about three-fourths there are seeing a decrease this year per their preliminary tax statements that went out in November. So moving on, so you can see there, the next page, that is our desired outcome for today's meeting is to approve a final tax levy and also a final budget here for the deadlines by the end of the year here that the county sets. Sort of our budget timeline here. We met on August third and seventeenth to talk about the tax levy funds for the, at work sessions, pretty full work sessions, had good discussions. September eighth, there was certified a preliminary tax levy of two point seven eight percent increase, and that was a five-oh vote approving that. And then now from there, we went through the process of preparing, completing the final budget. So we've had discussions at our October and November work sessions on the enterprise funds, water, sewer, storm, recycling. Talked about our park and tree funds. We've obviously had multiple discussions on our road funds and what projects we're looking at doing there. There's a feasibility report on a local project later in the agenda. So, yeah, as stated earlier, the staff would recommend certifying a final levy, and the final levy that's in the package is the amount that was the same as the preliminary levy, and then also approving the budget documents that were attached. Next slide, more just one that council seen this some many times before. Obviously, each year we look at, you know, the city's financial stability, what capital improvements, infrastructure needs we have, what our staffing benefit, you know, what's, what levels we need to provide good service to the community, to our residents. And then, especially in recent years, some of our funding of our pavement management plans become a high priority. Next slide is an overview of the last three years of the levies. You can see the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty final levies along with the twenty twenty-one proposed final levy. You can see there the components of the levy, the general fund debt, road maintenance, and CIP levies. Total, that's five million ninety-seven six oh two number. And once you factor in the fiscal disparities received for the county, that hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar number, the total net spread to all property owners in the city is the four million nine forty-three three fifty-eight. Next slide, just wanted to go over what sort of happened, I guess, in twenty twenty at a high level. You can see there's the different revenue sources there, categories, property taxes, permits, and license. Intergovernmental and on down the line there. The two biggest variances you'll see is that we've had a good year again as far as permits and licenses. I think we're gonna come in, you know, right now, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, maybe even a little more to the good on permits and licenses. We've just had a really good, a lot of people are wanting to build in, within COVID and other parts of the cities, which is a good thing. And then you can see the CARES Act fund money is under the intergovernmental. That's basically the variance there that we talked about that at multiple council meetings as far as the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar amount we received during the year, during twenty twenty. Next slide after that, just shows some of the revenue and expenditure trends over the last few years and then projected for twenty twenty-one. And see, we've had our expenditures outpace our revenues by a little bit over the past few years. You know, twenty twenty, based on what we're seeing, will be a difference there as far as having money to put to the general funds bottom line. And then you can see there, the twenty twenty-one proposed budget has about a couple hundred thousand dollars budgeted fund use there, two hundred and seventeen thousand. Next slide, I guess, make more quantify that and show us that in dollars. Few of those different numbers, I guess, are variables of the budget trend analysis there. You can see the tax levy trend going back about five years and then twenty twenty-one, the general fund reserves, and then our, our general fund reserve percentage there is how that's trended over the past several years. So when I've made the asterisk there, that the twenty twenty column includes the CRF funds and the projected building permit revenue variance. Next slide is, you said, I think this was, you saw this one back in August, September timeframe, the tax impact. So you can see, you know, basically, right around a four percent valuation increase was, I guess, the, whether the means, the correct term or whatever, as far as what, you know, properties, you know, have seen from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one for their property value for purposes of their tax statement. So that's shown there in the first two columns. And then the levy increase of two point seven eight percent. And then our growth rate in the city's been three point four percent for this year. So that calculates out to a projected tax rate of about that twenty-three point three seven percent. So when you plug in those numbers, basically, properties that had, you know, a increase of about four percent or less in the city would see their property taxes stay relatively flat or go down as shown in this slide here. So that's some, what this, that's illustrating there. Last few slides are more just some of the different assumptions, commitments, items. Obviously, we have our labor contracts and our non-union salaries and benefits. We've got one contract settled, a couple more to go with the police union contracts. Our capital equipment plan, our, we're funding with some cash levy and fund balance. And then the pavement management plan, we were increasing that amount by a hundred and twenty-five thousand as we talked about through our, our processes summer. Next slide, I think I referenced earlier, the general fund would be used about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars there. Projected fund balance around, at the end of twenty-one would be right around sixty percent based on our, your projections and estimations. One other thing to note, our municipal state aid funds, we're looking to mainly have this drawn down as of twenty twenty-one. We did that draw for nine hundred and forty-four thousand here late in twenty twenty. We're also looking at, obviously, using funds for the Sunny Field project. So once those items are factored in, we've pretty much used most, if not all, of our state aid balance, which is fine. And that's what it's meant and intended to be used for. Since summary, again, looking for action later in the meeting during the business portion for, on the final tax levy to approve by resolution. I think we had good discussions at the work sessions regarding our budget, you know, our capital improvement plans. We looked at our financial management plans. Once again, the final levy is about that two point seven eight percent increase. You know, some of the major items in there that's funding is roads, equipment, infrastructure. It's obviously been a, an emphasis, you know, recently here. And that will be looking to adopt those items later for the tax levy budget as well as the fee schedule later in the meeting. So I think I'll stop talking now and open it up to the mayor, council, and residents.
Thank you, Brian. So first, does the council have any questions, Brian? And obviously, we can come back to the council at any time. But if you have any specific questions that you might think might be of help for the public at this time, why don't we ask those and then we'll go to the public?
This is Shannon. And I, it's not a question per se for, for Mr. Grimm, but just for the benefit of new council members. If you look at page fifteen of the presentation where it shows assumptions, commitments, questions, that second bullet point shows a projected fund balance to be around sixty percent. And just for the benefit of new council members, I just wanted to point out that sixty percent is a high number for a projected fund balance at year end for twenty twenty-one, which is great to be in that position. Normally, forty-five to fifty percent is the target and is considered healthy. So I would just like them to remember this when it comes time to consider the tax levy for twenty twenty-two, that we should be considering sending down this fund balance before increasing tax levies for twenty twenty-two. Thanks.
And that's, that's a very good point. Our fund, our fund balance policy actually stays between thirty-five and fifty. And again, back in twenty fifteen, when I came on board, the fund balance was over sixty percent. And we said too at the time, that's way too high, we need to start drawing down on that. And that's part of what we've been doing over the past six years, drawing down on that fund balance. I agree, it's sixty percent is too high, and we'll be talking about that over the next year. So, and the only reason it's this high right now, as you know, is because of the COVID dollars that came to the city. And I think part of the discussion this coming year in twenty-one will be, how do we want to spend those dollars? And that'll be, I think, some discussion items that we will have. So thank you for that comment. Anybody else?
Uh, this is council member.
All right. Yeah.
Um, this is for Brian. On page ten of the packet, where you point out the variances, the fines and forfeits, although that's not a huge item, it's quite a bit of a variance, and I've noticed that throughout the year. Do you know what's going on there, why we're seeing such a dip there?
Oh, I could probably take a stab at that, maybe if Chief Falls wants to chime in. But I wonder if it's just maybe with some of the current times, times, you know, as far as just the way maybe they're even handling different traffic stops and such. But I think it's trended, or maybe it's even people are driving better within the city or combination there of. So I don't know if Chief Falls wants to jump in, but I think that has actually trended down a little bit over the last years. And I think this year, I'm really seeing a dip in that, basically through October, November timeframe here.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Chief Falls here, that's exactly what's going on. COVID has certainly changed the way we have done business in, in twenty twenty. And so as a result, especially initially, the, a lot of the proactive efforts came almost to a halt just for fear of, of contracting the virus with staff. So certainly, much of the proactive activity has, has been reduced significantly. It still is to some extent, it's starting to come back. But that's probably the primary reason for seeing that number so low at this point.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments? All right, so then I'll take it to the public. If there's anybody in the audience listening in and would like to either have a question or make a comment regarding the budget, you may do so at this time. All right, I'm not hearing anybody coming forward for that, for that. So with that, we will move on then to our next special presentations this evening. I believe Mr. Veroni will be doing these. We have two council members leaving the council this year. We have council member Shannon Bruce and council member Mike Molitor. So Mr. Veroni?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. You are correct, we do have two members of our city council who are finishing up their city council careers tonight. I would like to read the resolutions that city staff prepared on behalf of these two outgoing council members. And if the council doesn't mind, I think I'll just begin that now. So first on our list is council member Shannon Bruce. And the resolution reads as follows. Shannon Bruce was elected in November twenty sixteen and has served one full four-year term as an elected city council member from January of twenty seventeen through December of twenty twenty. And whereas council member Bruce held office during a time when the city of Minnetrista is in an extended growth curve with all the concerns normally associated with a growing municipality compounded in the last year by having to deal with all the issues related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas council member Bruce has been a supporter of city infrastructure improvements to local and municipal state aid road projects, other infrastructure like improved water mains, sewer lines, and lift stations, the purchase of our own dust abatement equipment, the implementation of swamp, as well as larger projects like the Sunny Field Water Tower Rehab and the construction of the new Southwest Water Tower. And whereas council member Bruce has been a supporter of public safety, participating in National Ion Out and serving as a liaison to both the Saint Bonnie Fire Commission and the Mount Fire Commission and supporting the ongoing work towards a potential fire district. And whereas council member Bruce has been a supporter of city staff approving many pay and benefit changes, labor agreements, and technology improvements, and now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Minnetrista that we thank Shannon Bruce for her service to the residents of the city of Minnetrista adopted this seventh day of December twenty twenty. And so, Mayor, I will ask you to call for a vote.
All right, well, first I need a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution that Mr. Veroni just read?
This is John T., so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland, is there a second?
I'll second that, this is Pam.
All right, and Ms. Mortenson made that second, so all those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye, Lisa Whalen, Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five-oh. Next is a resolution recognizing council member Mike Molitor, Mr. Veroni.
Yes, Mayor, so I'll read the resolution as I did for Ms. Bruce. So whereas Mike Molitor was elected in November twenty sixteen and has served a, served one full four-year term as an elected city council member in January twenty seventeen through December twenty twenty. And whereas council member Molitor prior to his council election served on the planning commission. Mr. Molitor was appointed to the planning commission in January of twenty twelve for a full four-year term, beginning in January twenty twelve and ending in December twenty fifteen. Then in January twenty sixteen, Mr. Molitor was reappointed to another four-year term on the planning commission, but only served one year due to being elected to the city council in November of that year. Whereas council member Molitor held office during a time when the city of Minnetrista was in an extended growth curve with all the concerns normally associated with a growing municipality compounded in the last year by having to deal with all the issues related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas council member Molitor has been a supporter of city infrastructure improvements to local and municipal state aid road projects, other infrastructure like improved water mains, sewer lines, and lift stations, purchase of our own dust abatement equipment, the implementation of swamp, as well as larger projects like the Sunny Field Water Tower Rehab and the construction of the new Southwest Water Tower, and was instrumental in having the engineered, engineering detail plates amended to include an additional one and a half inches of bi-tumulus asphalt added for future street construction and extending roadway life. Whereas council member Molitor has been a supporter of public safety, reasonable development, enhanced financial strategy, city staff pay benefit changes, technology improvements, and evaluating all the issues with both the short-term and long-term consequences in mind, and now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Minnetrista that we thank Mike Molitor for his years of service to the residents of the city of Minnetrista. And there, I'll let you call for a motion.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So with that, is there a motion to pass the resolution recognizing outgoing city council member Mike Molitor?
This is Shannon, so moved.
All right, Ms. Bruce made that motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, this is Pam.
All right, so Pam made that second, so all those in favors that will signify with aye. Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, motion passes five-oh. So thank you to both, both of you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanna make a comment real quick to Mike, if I could. Um, Mike, it has been a pleasure serving with you on city council for the last four years. And I personally have learned a lot from you over these years. And the city has greatly benefited, benefited from your service on city council. And I appreciate all your time and as a resident, as a solid city council member, and I thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you both for your service to the city. So with that, we'll move on then. That concludes our special presentations. And we have persons to be heard. And I know we have Mr. Evan Carlson, I believe, is your name, if I got your name correct. And what you can do, Mr. Carlson, is you're gonna have to state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to address the council on a topic that you would like us to consider. The council may not take action on your request this evening. And with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have an item on the consent agenda. I'm the solar land investor. My name is Evan Carlson, and I live at three five one five Cedar Lake Avenue in Minneapolis. To give you an update on the project, all other information that I've received back is positive. The project looks like it is a go. I have executed the purchase option on the property, and I am invested in this point and committed to seeing the project through. I was very careful when I selected this parcel. And I want to convey this in as respectful a manner as possible. I understand that this is not posture or bravado, but this project is going to get built. It's just the reality of the situation. And I was sure of that when I selected the parcel. And I'm so confident in it that I exercised the option. And I understand that it's an unpopular project and that many of you don't want to be perceived as approving of it. Many of you certainly don't approve of it or don't want it there. But that doesn't change the reality of the situation that it's going to get built. I think that the city would be better served if the council were to accept this reality and work out a deal for the benefit of its residents, rather than passing this resolution and kicking the can down the road to the courts to make the inevitable unpopular decision. And this would effectively approve the project with no modifications from its current form. Now, going through this, this appeal process, it takes time and money. I have allocated the capital necessary to appeal and win. But I'm willing to share that capital if we don't have to waste it on lawyers. If we can allocate that money to improving the location of panels, enhancing vegetative screening, building fences, whatever I gotta do to make people happy with it, I, I'm happy to, much rather spend the money on that than on lawyers. So what I'm asking for you to do is to remove my item from the consent agenda and appoint a committee to work on a resolution with me that would be mutually acceptable. It may not be the most popular among. may not be the most popular among everybody, but it will still be an improvement hopefully from its current form, which is going to happen if you force it through a denial. So, you know, I still want to be a good neighbor, I still want to work with people, I understand that it's an unpopular project and I want to do everything I can to make it more acceptable and I want to extend my willingness to work with you on that on that option, the option of working on it mutually acceptable resolution before the opportunity is gone and once this resolution is approved, you know, that's it, then the lawyers have it and it's just wasting money on it, it's going to get done in its current form and I'd rather spend that money on keeping neighbors happy than on lawyers.
All right, well, thank, yeah, thank you, Mr. Carlson. Unfortunately, since you've indicated legal action against the city, we can't discuss this here tonight and we were, we are going to have to take this back to our lawyer, so it's probably going to remain on the consent agenda unless another, unless the council decides to pull it, but with that said, thank you for your comments, appreciate them and we'll move on then to our next items, thank you. Do we have any other persons to be heard that would like to address the council?
Mayor, this is Mike Brony, there's a number of people that are on this call, but I have no way of knowing if they are here to talk about that or something else, so I think if you want to just ask somebody if they do want to discuss this topic, unmute themselves and talk, I think now is the time, but like I said, there's a few names I just don't recognize here.
All right, again, is there anybody else that would like to address the council on, let's say, a topic that's not on the agenda unless it's this particular topic, I don't want to take up a lot of time, Mr. Carlson indicated he'd like this removed and approved, I don't see that happening, but again, we'll take it back to the council, is there anybody else that?
I'd like to move to have a committee appointed to work on a resolution, that's my ask, I'd like a committee to be appointed to work on a resolution directly with me without the lawyers to hopefully come back to the council with something that people can live with.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, all right. With that, anybody else wishing to make a comment? All right, I'm not hearing any, council, what is your wish here, what would you like to do with this?
Madam Mayor, this is, if I'm understanding correctly, we're on item three of the agenda, which is persons to be heard, are we now moving on to the consent agenda?
Well, we can move on to the consent agenda and if, or if the council wishes to entertain the idea that Mr. Carlson put forward.
We normally don't take action on persons to be heard.
Correct, that's, that's my intention as well, yep. So I guess my, my recommendation is, we normally don't take action, we should move to the consent agenda items, so unless I hear differently from the council, that is what we will do. All right, so we'll move on to consent agenda items and they include, A, approve the work session meeting minutes from October 5th, 2020, B, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from October 5th, 2020, C is a resolution to approve our claims, D is a resolution to accept improvements and authorize final payment for the 2020 Crackfield project and E is a resolution to...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, but I don't think you're reading the correct consent agenda.
Yeah, you're correct, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you. All right, wrong agenda here, okay, next, approved, thank you, approved, as I was reading that, I'm going, wait a minute, this doesn't sound right, okay, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from October 19th, 2020, approve our work session meeting minutes from November 9th, 2020, approve our closed session meeting minutes from November 9th, 2020, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from November 9th, 2020, approve our special meeting minutes from November 13th, 2020, then it's approve our claims, then approve our polling places for 2021 elections, even though we probably won't have elections in 21, nonetheless, we have to approve them, and then H is approve and finalize the 2020 budgeted transfers and I is approve the 2020 budget amendments and J is a site, is a resolution for the site plan for solar at PID is to deny the site plan for the solar at PID number 20-117-24-22-002 and then K is a resolution to approve the partial assignment of the master development agreement to M&amp;I Homes for Woodland Cove Phase 4 and J is approve a setback variance at 4340 Highland Road for the Metropolitan Council for their new lift station and then the M is approve a setback variance at 5445 Cedar Point Road, those are all of our consent agenda items. Any, is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items consisting of A through M?
This is, this is Shannon, I'd like to remove item F, approving the claims.
All right, that leaves all the rest of the items, A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, K, L and M, is there a motion to approve those?
This is Shannon, so moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that, this is Pam.
Okay, Pam made that second, so we had a motion by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortensen to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, K and L and M, all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Maliter, how do you vote? And Mr. Trumperland, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ms., who haven't, um, John, Pam?
You didn't ask for meaning, so.
All right, Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
All right, and I vote aye, I think that's everyone now, all right, all right, thank you. So motion passes 5-0, Ms. Bruce, you had questions on the claim?
Yes, thank you, on page 103 of the packet, about a little further than halfway down, there's a payment to domain listings and I had a discussion with Mr. Brony this morning and we determined that that is, that payment is, domain listings is a scam organization, they, and the payment was made to them where, it's sort of a long story, they, they pretend like they're, they, they send companies an invoice and it looks very much like an invoice, but it's, it's really a scam and at the bottom it says, this is not an invoice, it's just a subscription if you decide to pay for it and anyway, the city paid this and shouldn't have and I was told that they're going to issue a stop payment on it, so I would just like to amend the claims, taking this item off, that this item wasn't approved because they're going to request a stop payment and I guess I had a question, um, is it, when, when was that check made and is it possible to stop payment this later or was it just within a few days ago?
No, like, yeah, council member Bruce, let me clarify, I don't think Mr. Brony got it quite right, we haven't released this check yet, so there's no need to even do a stop payment, it's just, we'll just void it, never send it, so it's, yeah, yeah, we, I mean, any of these checks usually that are, go through, we don't send out till after the council meeting unless there's been a big gap between council meetings or something that, you know, is inherently approved without having to come to council, so this hasn't, yeah.
Okay. Okay, then, then just remove that item and then we're fine.
Okay, and that's, give me the number again, the page number?
On page 103, 103, and the payment was to domain listings for $228.
All right, all right, so are you making that motion then?
Yes.
All right, so a motion has been made to approve claims with the removal of the domain listings check and the amount of $228, is there a second to that motion?
This is John, I'll second.
Oh, okay, Mr. Trumperland, sorry Pam, I'm going to give it to Mr. Trumperland this time, all right. All right, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. Mortensen, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen, motion passes 5-0. So now we'll move on to our next items here on our agenda, it's our public hearing, so we have a fee schedule, this is a public hearing and it is, we have to then adopt and it will be an ordinance that the city council will be adopting and then after that we will also be approving publication of the ordinance by title and summary only. For Mr. Grimm, I believe you are going to do the presentation on this.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, so this item starts on page 205 in your packet, so if you are, go to that, you'll see both a, I guess a red line version copy as well as a clean copy after that are attached in your packet, I guess on pages 206 and beyond, so I guess that is sort of highlighting the memo, the main probably changes, you know, I don't think there's any major changes made to the fee schedule, the utility, water utility rates, we discussed in October about the 4% increase there, the waste management or should say the recycling quarterly fee sort of being driven by just the increase in the recycling market, you know, that we've talked about in, I think, October, November as well as far as that going to $11 a quarter, otherwise, yeah, there's just some minor changes for like our water meter fees and stuff that we charge just based on what we're, you know, billed ourself for those type of items. On page 210 is just our land use fees for reimbursable work for our attorney and engineer, you see those, you know, red line amounts there, new amounts to the old amounts, otherwise, yeah, I think, you know, the water connection fees, the water area charges going up slightly and that's pretty much the main changes that are being proposed for 2021 in comparison to 2020 for our fee schedule, so maybe I'll just open it up for any questions through the council or, I don't know if the mayor wants to open the public hearing first and then do, do questions from the council, however you want to do it.
Well, why don't we, yeah, let's do questions from the council first because maybe some people in the audience might have some of the same questions, but council, do you have any questions of staff regarding the fee schedule?
This is Shannon, I have a question on page 212, under service fees, it says ag preservation application, I'm just curious why that doubled, it went from, you know, 50 plus 75, 125 to 250, I'm just curious why that doubled, that just seems a lot.
Yeah, and maybe council member Bruce and members of council, maybe let David speak to that, when I know David and Nick Olson took a look at that and analyzed that, so I don't know if David would want to jump in and just maybe explain the process and why the fee is proposed to be, to go to the $250.
Yeah, sure, thank you, Brian and members of council, so the, why that has been increased is because we utilize the city attorney's office for recording of said ag preserve applications, all applications come through city hall and then ultimately need to be recorded down at Hennepin County at the court's office, Kennedy and Graven's office is located just across the street from that, so we historically and always use them to go ahead and record said documents and the time that it's been taking to record the documents has increased due to some, the complexities that we're running into with some of these applications, so that's why it was increased to just simply cover those costs of getting the documents recorded. The system has changed a little bit too, as you recall, where we have now properties that can be taken out sooner than later, we've done that here actually not all that long ago and so there's some, some new nuances to the process in of itself, so that's, that's the reason for the increase, we were just seeing the bills come back from Kennedy and Graven greater than what the fee was, so that's why we increased it to try to cover those costs.
Okay, so they're just being driven by attorney fees?
Essentially, yes, and process, yeah, the complexity of the properties, yes, essentially, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, otherwise I'll take it, open the public hearing. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time, if there's anybody that wishes to speak, either have questions or comments regarding ordinance number 462, which is our fee schedule for 2021, you may do so at this time, I'll give you a few minutes here or a few seconds to step forward. All right, I'm not hearing anybody, so I'm going to assume that you're listening in for other reasons, so with that then, I will close the public hearing and take it back to the council, if the council has any further questions, we can have those answered now, otherwise we can make a motion to adopt ordinance number 462, which is the 2021 fee schedule as amended. Okay, no questions, no comments, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 462?
This is John, I'll so move.
All right, Mr. Trumperland made that motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, this is Pam.
All right, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that, are there any further questions or comments? All right, hearing none and all those in favor will signify with aye, aye Lisa Whalen, I vote aye, Ms. Mortensen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
All those in favor have signified with aye, motion passes 5-0. So next, we also have to approve the publication of ordinance number 462 by title and summary, if we don't approve that, then it has to be published in its entirety, which gets very expensive, so is there anybody would like to make a motion to approve publication of ordinance number 462 by title and summary?
This is Shannon, so moved.
All right, is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trumperland, Ms. Bruce, so Ms. Bruce made that motion, Mr. Trumperland seconded that, any further questions, comments? Hearing none, motion will be voted on, all those in favor will signify with aye, Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen, motion passes 5-0. So those conclude, that concludes our public hearings, so next we'll move on to our business items, our first business item is budget approvals, I believe this is you, Mr. Grimm, again.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, this is on page 227 of the packet and it is adoption of our 2021 final tax levy, on the resolution that's presented on page 228 is as referenced earlier under the public comment discussion, it's the same amount, $5,097,602, that's shown there, this was, as referenced earlier, adopted, you know, on a 5-0 vote by the city council back in 2021. Um, this was, um, as referenced, um, earlier adopted, you know, on a 5-0 vote by the city council back in September. Um, I guess, uh, I don't know if there's any questions or comments from council. Uh, I guess we probably would take those now, otherwise the documents are shown as referenced on page 228. And then also the, uh, county has their forms is basically on 230 and 231 showing, um, you know, certifying those amounts to the county for, uh, application to 2021 taxes.
All right, thank you, Brian. I know we've discussed it, um, number of times, um, multiple times. And, uh, Brian gave a very nice overview, um, kind of a synopsis. Does, uh, council have any, um, further questions? All right, then is there a motion to approve resolution number 152-2020, which is adopting the final 2020 tax levy collectible in 21?
This is Pam.
So move.
So move.
Okay, and Mike Malater seconded that, I believe?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mike. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, then we will take a vote. All those in favor will signify with aye. Uh, Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And I, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. So motion passes 5-0. So next, um, we move on to approve our 21 budgets, a general fund, special revenue, debt service, CIP funds and enterprise. Grimm?
Yes, um, Madam Mayor and Council, uh, this is on, uh, page 232 of the packet and basically pulls together all the information that was, um, under the, uh, uh, information at the beginning of the agenda, um, or the packet, um, regarding the public type comment item. As you'll see there on, um, page 233, it shows the general fund, capital improvement fund, all the debt funds and special revenue fund and enterprise funds with revenues of projected of $10,562.172 and expenditures of $14,498.553. Um, we are spending down some fund balance in the water fund on the water tower and the sewer funds and some of the infrastructure project as well as, um, the, the road maintenance funds which you saw in the budget. We brought in some of those municipal state aid dollars in 2020. So basically that's where you see the difference between the expenditures and the revenues. It's, it's a planned spend down of dollars in financing sources we've identified. And, um, I guess, yeah, staff feels comfortable with the, uh, budget and numbers presented. So I just said, open it up for any questions or comments from city council.
All right, thank you, Brian. City council, any questions? All right, um, then with that, uh, is there a motion to adopt and approve the 2021 budgets as presented in our packet?
This is Shannon, so move.
And that would be, all right, Ms. Bruce made that motion. Is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
Oh, John beat you to it, Pam. All right, so Mr. Trumperland made that second. So this is for the 21 general capital improvement, CIP, the capital project funds, the debt service funds, the special revenue funds and the enterprise funds. So all those in favor will signify with aye. So Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen, motion passes 5-0. So that concludes our, I think, our budget, um, items. So we'll move on to our municipal state aid fund discussion. I think that is, Ms. Folsky?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can cover this item. Thank you. So, um, up for discussion this evening is, uh, the state aid, both the construction fund and maintenance fund allocations that we're anticipating for 2021. Uh, with the, with the pandemic and the decreased use of, uh, pa, of vehicles, um, throughout the United States, but specifically in Minnesota, the state saw a reduction in the gas tax um, and had indicated that we would be seeing a reduction of approximately 15% in, um, construction and maintenance fund allocations, uh, in 2021. Now, just this morning, I received an, um, email from the state indicating that, um, the reduction is actually anticipated to be 9%, which is good news, but still a reduction nonetheless. So the council may recall, the two funds that state aid has set, set up, um, the, the construction and maintenance funds, um, are for, for state aid routes, uh, are, is based on your state aid mileage. Now, the construction fund is used for capital projects like street reconstructions and mill and overlay. So for example, um, recent projects have been the Halsted Drive Mill and Overlay, the Halsted Drive Reconstruction Projects. And we are looking for the Sunnyfield Project here in, uh, 2021. So, um, the maintenance fund is a little more flexible in that, um, with state aid construction, you have to do plans and specifications, which is, which are all good things, um, but certainly have a, a cost associated with it. Whereas with maintenance funds, um, it's transferred to the city at the beginning of the year and the city u- utilizes that fund, um, for maintenance costs of, of roads. So, um, with the reduction and, um, the estimated reduction in both construction and maintenance fund allocations for 2021, the state has indicated that they will, um, consider, um, municipality requests to transfer the difference between the 2020 and the 2021 maintenance allocation, um, from, uh, make a transfer from the construction fund to the maintenance fund. So I wanted to bring that to the council's attention, um, to see if there's an appetite to do that. As I stated previously, the maintenance fund is just a little more fluid in the city using those, um, that funding mechanism. Um, so I, the numbers of course will be updated, but I included a breakdown of, um, you know, what we would be looking at for an estimated construction fund balance for 2021 should, should the transfer occur, um, from the construction fund to the maintenance fund. And we would, we're anticipating we would have adequate funding, um, for the Sunnyfield Construction Project. So with that, um, hope that provides some good background for the council to consider, um, providing direction on whether or not I should request, um, that the state, uh, allow us to do that transfer. And, um, just the next steps, if, if that's something the council would like to take a look at, I, I reach out to the state, um, and then if they indicate that that's something that they would consider, then I would be coming back to the council, um, with a resolution, uh, making a, an official request for that transfer. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, I wasn't sure if I was on mute or not. It's, all right, so with that, just if my numbers are correct, um, you're saying it's a 9% reduction, but in our packet, it reflected a 15% reduction, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so with the 9% reduction.
I just found out about the 9% this morning.
You're right. Yeah, no, I understand that. Um, so with that, it looks like we'll be receiving around 316, just under 317,000, and then we would be receiving, um, around 105.5, give or take a few dollars, um, for our construction. So that would mean if we wanted to supplement our construction up to the 116, we need about 10,442 out of the 316, 800. It's, it's roughly 316,700. So we would need to transfer or allocate another 10,442 out of that. I think it's good to know those numbers because that then tells us how much we have left there for the construction portion of it.
Yes, that's correct. And, and you are correct with your numbers, Madam Mayor. And, and the good news is, is with the, um, that what's shown in the packet is actually, um, those numbers are actually lower than what we, you know, what we heard from the state today.
Right, all right. Council, what, what questions might you have?
So just to clarify.
Go ahead, Mr. Malater.
Um, just to clarify, on the maintenance fund of this, um, do those maintenance funds, there still has, they still have to be used for MSA roads, is that correct?
Um, that's an excellent question. The, the maintenance funds just goes into the general, the, the city's general maintenance fund. The state doesn't, to my knowledge, they don't specify that it be used solely on state aid routes. Um, that they acknowledge that the city has, um, local improve, local roads to use those maintenance funds on as well.
Okay, so this allows us to, to, as you said, be more flexible and, and put the maintenance to whatever roads are probably needing it most. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good, good question. Yes, anybody else have a question? So really, we're not getting rid, we're any, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Trumperland, go ahead.
Uh, just a general question or maybe more specific, the, the projected cost on Sunnyfields, per the memo here was 520. That was without turn lane. And I don't recall whether we've decided on that or not. But looking back at previous meetings, I think the turn lane was projected at 225,000. So, I mean, that probably doesn't mean it, mean anything to what we're dealing with here other than we'll end up using all of the MSA funds for sure if that came to tuition.
Yeah, John, you're right.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, okay.
Oh, uh, um, Mr. Ch, Madam Mayor, um, council member Trumperland, um, has a good memory. But yes, the, the turn lane, um, estimate was between 225 and 250,000 dollars. And that was from a very high level. Um, that was back from February when, um, the council was taking a look at the, the traffic along Sunnyfield and taking a look at what some options could, could be under consideration, um, for turn lane improvements, intersection improvements and so on. Um, so what we've included in here is, um, as, as we're moving through the feasibility report and taking a look at, um, some of the street, the street construction costs associated with Sunnyfield and whether or not you put a turn lane in, um, certainly that swings the number one way or the other. Um, but we, I just wanted to provide council with, with a number just for that mainline component until we can get the feasibility study finalized and in front of you. I wanted to provide you with a little bit more, um, hold in estimate on, um, that street improvement cost.
So Mr. Trumperland, um, you're, you're correct, that's kinda, those are the numbers that were kind of, um, put out there initially. And so I think what we'll have to do when we see the feasibility report, when it comes back to us, I think it'll be in January, we're gonna have to take a look and, and kind of look at the turn lane and see what the ROI or what the benefits, um, are and do the benefits outweigh the cost or vice versa, so, um, or does the cost outweigh the benefit? So we'll be looking at that in, in January. Having said that, if we allocate, it would be $10,442 out of our current 316,724, um, if we allocate that towards the, um, road maintenance fund, we could still use some of those funds for the project. It's not, we, we can use it on anything. That's kind of the, the nice part about that. So just keeping that in mind. Yeah, all right, thank you. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I do have a question on this. The 520,000 that's noted here, that's the total cost, right?
That all did not include. Go ahead, Allison.
So Madam Mayor, that's, that's the cost for what we were looking at for street improvement costs for Sunnyfield. So there's, if the council recalls, that we were also looking at including Langwood in there and there were some trail improvements as well.
Right, right.
And, and I.
Where I'm going with that is, that was never, at least from what I recall, that was never intended that that whole cost had come entirely out of the MSA funds. I mean, we were still going to do an assessment of approximately 50%. Um, so you would still be looking at, uh, you know, half that number and therefore we wouldn't be taking the MSA fund down to zero or close to it. There'd still be, you know, a quarter of a million dollars left in there. Um, and that, which would leave, you know, room for the turn lane or whatever you want, you know, whatever the council wants to do. But I, I think that's a pretty important distinction. It's a very important distinction that there was still the assumption that we're going to assess for half of that. So I, I think this doesn't capture that.
Well, a couple of things, Mr. Malater, to consider is, one, we haven't talked about the assessment and whether it's gonna be 50% or not, that's another whole discussion. However, having said that, regardless of whatever the discussion may, I mean, uh, the assessments may or may not be, we still have to fund the project 100% until, and so let's just say it was an assess, some assessable amount. That amount may not come back to us immediately. So we're, we have to front those costs. So we do have to figure on using whatever funds we have to front those costs.
Well, you, I think it's still important to note here, cause I, it, it's kind of like we're starting to make assumptions here that this is not being assessed by not noting that here. This is kind of drifting off topic a little bit because we want to get back to transferring the funds. It's, I'm not opposed to that, but, yeah, that's 10,000 bucks. I'm more concerned about the 520 here. And I don't want to lose sight that we are not intending to take all of that from MSA dollars. To your point about the cash flow component of this, you know, that's gonna have to be a different discussion about that, just like it is, as to how we want to cash flow that in, as to if we take it all from MSA or if we levy for that, but, uh, or I mean, uh, bond for that. Um, but I think it's important to just not to lose sight of the fact that there's still an assessment that would go on here. Because there was some comment before about that would wipe out our MSA balance and, and that's not entirely true. So I just want to make sure that we're not losing sight of the fact that there would be an assessment here. But I'm, I'm fine with the transfers, I think that's.
And keep in mind, the 520 is, does not include the turn lane. So, um, but, okay, so yeah, tonight we're talking about the transfer and if the council wants to transfer the funds. So, um, and in this case, I just, uh, want to reiterate the, transfer of the funds would be, um, if my math is correct, $10,442 from our allocation of 316,724. So is there, um, an appetite of the council to transfer those funds into our road maintenance fund?
This is Shannon, I'll make a motion to do that.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? All such as.
This is Michael, I'll second.
All right, Ms. Mortensen made that second, so all those in favor will signify with aye. Um, Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. So motion passes 5-0. All right, um, so next we have our feasibility report and call for a public hearing for our local street improvement projects, um, for 2021. This does not include, uh, the Sunnyfield Road Project that we'll be talking about in January. So with that, Ms., um, I believe this is Mr. Gepwah. Adam?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, in your packet tonight is, uh, discussion item, business item here for accepting the feasibility study for the 2021 Street Improvement Project and calling the public hearing for January 4. And so, uh, a little bit of background discussion, as the council's aware, uh, 2021 Street Improvement Project is primarily focused on, um, pavement improvements and surface improvements. Um, namely, full depth reclamation, uh, of the existing pavement, um, addition of concrete curb and gutter, and then repaving a new pavement on Stonebridge Road, Stonebridge Circle, Loring Drive and Minneapolis Avenue. And then two other streets included are Hard Scrabble Circle and Hard Scrabble Road in North. Um, that, the, those streets are listed separately here. They have less of the additional concrete curb and gutter. Um, associated utility improvements, as, as the council's aware in past projects, the city, um, kind of gets banged for their buck when they go ahead and take care of some of the deteriorating utility infrastructure uh, in these, uh, kind of in this road right away. Um, when we're in there opening up the street, uh, it just, it's a benefit to go and take care of some of these utility improvements as well. So primarily addressing any. So primarily addressing any stormwater or drainage issues. Um, there will be some minor repairs to the water main, which is only on Stonebridge Road and Stonebridge Circle. And then improving the sanitary sewer systems, which primarily consists of, uh, replacing the two four-inch sanitary sewer force mains in the Hardscrabble area. There's one on Hardscrabble Circle, one on Hardscrabble Road North. Um, also included here is replacement of the lift station number three, which is, uh, located just north of Minneapolis Avenue, right next to the roadway. And there's a short force main associated with that lift station as well. Um, then you've got your minor utility improvements, which is just making sure that the utilities within the pavement themselves are adjusted correctly. Um, and, and so that's your valve boxes and your manholes in the roadway. So we've prepared the feasibility reports, and the reason that we had to go through the feasibility report process is because a portion of the project costs are proposed to be, um, funded by assessments to the benefiting property owners. So following the chapter four twenty-nine, um, process, uh, the remaining portion of the project costs would be paid, are proposed to be paid by city funds. So the feasibility report is included, uh, in the packet for the council's review and, uh, really provides a detailed description of the existing conditions, what the streets look like now, um, the proposed improvements, what we anticipate those, uh, improvements costing, and then the preliminary assessment amounts. One thing to note that you'll, um, hopefully have read through in the feasibility report is that the scope of improvements has somewhat been, uh, modified, I guess, if you will, since the September twenty-first council meeting. Um, so based on comments we heard from residents at the neighborhood meeting, um, feedback and, and continued discussions with the city council regarding, um, the curb, the, the curb options, if you will, for the streets, the two minutes of concrete, and, uh, also further discussions with city public work staff as we work through the report process. Um, some things were added and included in the report for consideration by the council. Um, so in summary, those, those improvements included, um, looking at the trails on Minneapolis Avenue and determining that there are some improvements needed on the two trails, uh, adjacent to the road right there. Uh, adding some guardrail and safety components to Minneapolis Avenue where it is a pretty steep drop-off off of County Road nineteen. Of course, uh, adding full concrete curb and gutter on Loring Drive, Stonebridge Road, and Stonebridge Circle, um, as well as Minneapolis Avenue, if I didn't state that already. And then, um, lastly, there, there's some more sanitary sewer work proposed. There's a, a, a second lift station on Hardscrabble that, um, after talking with public work staff, it makes sense if, if one is being replaced and they're having issues with it, it makes sense to do this small section from Lift Station eleven as well underneath that, those streets. And, um, some storm sewer work on Loring Drive that wasn't anticipated, that was supposed to be lined with this year's sewer lining project, but once, uh, once the contractor got in there and took a closer look at the inside of the pipe and cleaned it really well, determined that it could not be lined, it wouldn't be worth the city's money to do that. Um, so instead, it's proposed to actually drill a new outlet and completely abandon that line. And then finally, um, two more items here on, on Minneapolis Avenue, the lift station, which has been on the radar of city staff, uh, for a while. When Minneapolis Avenue was brought into the, uh, 2021 project and early discussions, uh, what came along with it was the lift station, which is right next to it, uh, and that's, if everyone will recall, because we don't want to improve the roadway, especially adding curb and gutter and having to come back in a, a few years whenever this lift station fails or becomes unsafe, uh, more unsafe, and actually dig back into the road. And so that's why that's included. And then finally, talking with some residents and, um, as part of our, as, as part of the swamp program, the council's aware of the pond up a Bayside Lane. Um, and actually, uh, the situation there is that it's, it's overtopping and affecting the residents on Minneapolis Avenue. So it's kind of crossing the boundaries there, and, and so looking at that, um, pond is discussed in the feasibility report. So those are kind of the added, uh, scope. You can see here that when we first, uh, talked about this at the September twenty-first meeting, the projected cost was around one point six five million. Um, now, when you look at the estimated cost summary in the table provided below, you can see that with those, uh, added sanitary storm sewer trail improvements and lift station, the total estimated project cost right now is just around two point seven million. Um, so for reclamation projects, the city's assessment policy and past practice has been assessing fifty percent of the total surface and drainage improvement costs. And so that's Schedule A there and Schedule B in the table. Um, so these, a lot of this added scope actually, uh, does, doesn't affect the assessment amounts, um, at this time. And so as we go to the next page, um, you can see that there is a estimated assessment calculation for each, um, schedule. And that's kind of what I was alluding to there. You can see Schedule A and D have assessable amounts, and the rest would be funded by city fund. Um, right below that table is the preliminary unit assessment rate that's laid out in the feasibility report, and that's a preliminary number, um, for each of the, the areas, if you will. Um, Stonebridge, Stonebridge Road and Circle and Loring Drive are very close in proximity and very similar in scope. And so the feasibility report loops those projects in together and, uh, assesses the same unit assessment rate for those parcels. As you head north up to Hardscrabble Road North and Circle, you, you'll recall that, uh, it's a much longer street, um, but the parcels are much bigger. Um, so they're all looped together for calculating that preliminary unit assessment rate. And, uh, the same methodology over on Minneapolis Avenue, um, a lot more units there, a little bit more dense, uh, less length of streets. You can see that, that assessment, preliminary unit assessment rate is slightly lower. Um, a detailed project schedule is provided in the report, also, uh, in summary here in your agenda item. So, um, tonight we're considering accepting the feasibility study and ordering the public hearing. Uh, if the public hearing's ordered, that would be held on January fourth, and we do a quick, um, quick turnaround to approving the plans and specifications so that we can get out for an early spring and late winter bid and hopefully obtain, um, some good bid prices. Have the bid opening at March ninth and, uh, calling the assessment hearing on the fifteenth. At that April fifth meeting would be the assessment hearing where we would have the, uh, final assessment amount. And so again, uh, the amounts stated earlier were preliminary at this time. Begin construction in May and then, uh, work throughout 2021 and complete it in October. So that's a summary of the feasibility report, but again, the full report is in the packet, and we have a resolution for accepting the report and, um, calling the public hearing. But prior to that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gepwah. Council, do you have any questions? So I have some questions, um, Adam, if you could. So for instance, um, there is a holding pond, a stormwater pond at the end of Minneapolis Avenue. It's actually maybe even beyond Minneapolis Avenue, and it, um, it really, it receives the drainage from Bayside Lane and maybe, maybe only one or two homes on Minneapolis Avenue. And then it, um, goes into Lake Minnetonka. There's like a ravine, and all of that needs to be reevaluated and reworked and whatever. I want to make sure that, that people on Minneapolis Avenue are not being assessed for that portion of the stormwater project because it's really not their stormwater that's being treated. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that clarification, Madam Mayor. Uh, that, the, the funding for the pond cleanup is yet to be determined by the city council. Um, the council's been discussing maybe for about a year, the swamp program, and Bayside Lane's one of those neighborhoods where they don't have an HOA anymore. And so we're trying to figure out how to work with them on getting that pond cleaned out. Um, but since we're over here on Minneapolis Avenue and it's, and we know that it's causing a drainage issue for folks on Minneapolis, we're gonna have equipment, um, um, in there performing the street work. It would be a, uh, opportune time to take care of that pond cleanup. The funding, though, would be out of a, out of the city's funds and not, not assessed by, or not assessed to the residents on Minneapolis Avenue.
Okay, so would the residents on Bayside have to chip in a portion of it or something, or is it a city, um, pond?
It is not a city pond, and, um, I don't know, and maybe there's some other city staff that could respond, but I don't know that the, or the council, uh, if a decision has been made on these developments where it's a private pond, but there's no HOA to take responsibility for it. And, uh, Gary Peters could chime in. I know the, right before his time here, I believe the city did go back there and, and clean it out at one point. So there's a little bit of a precedent there for folks in that neighborhood that it was cleaned out once. And Gary, if you want to add something to that or if it's necessary, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Well, yes, it was before my time here, I believe it was about two thousand eight, nine, or ten, somewhere in there, the city did go out under, uh, the request of the homeowner on the cul-de-sac of Bayside Lane to, uh, have the pond excavated because it was, um, full of sediment and it was actually overflowing. And since I've been here, I've been contacted by two different homeowners on Minneapolis Avenue for the overflow of that pond, um, during heavy rainfalls, saturating the two homes across the street from it on Minneapolis Avenue. So, um, there is a good case to get this pond cleaned out.
Okay. Um, I just want to make, so for discussion purposes tonight, and so we're gonna have to, I'm sure, discuss this, um, um, next January, February, whatever, um, coming year here. But for discussion purposes tonight, I just wanted to make sure that the people on Minneapolis Avenue are not being assessed for any of the work that could potentially be done on that pond and, and, and that drainage ditch. So, all right, so I'm hearing you say no, that would not, they would not be assessed.
That is correct. Thank you.
Right, Mr.? Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, then, um, is there a motion to approve resolution, I believe it's one fifty-four, twenty twenty, and that is accepting the feasibility study and calling the public hearing for the city project, projects for 2021?
This is Mike Maliter.
Okay, I meant, thank you. Mr. Maliter made that. I'm gonna say, Mr. Maliter made that motion, and Mr. Trumperlin seconded that. I think you all three came in at the same time. Um, so any further questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, then, all those in favor will signify with aye. Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
Yeah, Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. Motion passes five oh. So, thank you very much, Mr. Gepwah, for all of the information in our packet. Um, next we move on to the city calendar. We had a, um, discussion about this at our work session. Um, is it Mike or Ally, um, are you gonna take this one?
I believe Chris is gonna take it.
Okay, Chris.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, every year we have to do approving the city calendar, and yes, we, we talked about it at our work session. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of, um, changes for 2021. Um, since we don't have, uh, elections this year, uh, we'll have two meetings in November. So in January, we will have two holidays. February, we will have our annual EDA meeting on February first, along with our, um, we'll have three meetings. We'll have our work session, our EDA, and our council meeting. And then we also have, um, a holiday on, in February. Um, basically, March, April, uh, we have two council meetings and, um, and then in May, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to have our recycling cleanup day. Um, that is scheduled for May eighth, and then our Trista Day celebration is scheduled for May fifteenth. So if everything's going well and, um, we, we're not still under COVID, um, constraints, um, hopefully, we can do those two, um, events this year. Uh, we'll be closed for Memorial Day on May thirty-first. Um, in July, we will only have one meeting, uh, because our holiday falls so close to the Fourth of July. It has been in past that we've always taken that first meeting off, so the second meeting will be on the nineteenth, or excuse me, the only meeting we will have will be on, uh, July nineteenth. Um, in September, we will have a holiday. Um, November, we will have, again, two, uh, work session and city council meetings. So we'll have it November first and November fifteenth with our holiday, uh, Veterans Day on the eleventh, and then for Thanksgiving, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Now, as there's a few, there's a, I noticed typo error for, error in December. Um, it should say the twenty-second is the land use application deadline. Um, I had the twenty-fourth in there twice, so should be changed to the twenty-third for the offices closed per our, um, work session discussion. And then we will also have the twenty-fourth off as the Christmas holiday. Uh, again, as discussed, we would have normally had, uh, December thirty-first off, but the way it sounded at the work session is that we were gonna do a floating holiday in 2022 so that we are consistent with the eleven holidays. Um, that's about it. I will stand for any questions if anybody has any.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lindquist. Council, any questions? Okay, I know we discussed this, so, um, so with that, is there then a motion to, um, approve, well, is, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Lindquist, is this a, an ordinance amending? No, I'm sorry, it's not. Um, resolution to approve the city calendar. It's not an ordinance. It's a, that was the feed schedule. Uh, approve the city calendar for 2021 as Ms. Lindquist, uh, presented.
This is John T. So moved.
All right, thank you, John. Uh, Mr. Trumperlin made that motion. Is there a second?
This is Shannon, all second.
Thank you, Shannon. Um, Ms. Bruce made that second. All those in favor, then, will signify with aye. Uh, Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Miss, uh, Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. Motion passes five oh. Thank you very much. We have a calendar and we can have meetings. Uh, moving on, then, now, uh, we're talking about, uh, city council salaries. Again, this was discussed at our council meeting, yeah, at our work session, I'm sorry. And we're bringing it back for a little more discussion, and this would be an ordinance if it passes. So, Ms., uh, Mr. Baroni or Ms. Paulus, who wants to take this one?
I can take this one, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you.
All right.
At the November ninth council meeting, city directed, the city council directed staff to look into and provide research for the city council to review the mayor and council salaries. As required by state statute, establishment of new salaries will not take effect until after the next election, which would mean any salary increase for Minnetrista would not be in effect until January twenty twenty-three. As seen in the packet, staff conducted research to compare Minnetrista's elected official salaries to surrounding cities. Uh, this research was discussed at the work session meeting earlier tonight. Knowing that it has been more than fifteen years since the last salary adjustment, and based on the research provided, staff is recommending the annual mayor's salary increase to six thousand dollars and the annual council member's salary increase to forty-eight hundred dollars per year. This increase is equal to a hundred dollars per month increase per selected, or per elected official. As discussed in the work session, number three of the proposed ordinance states that the mayor and city council members are to receive a meeting stipend of fifty dollars. This language was removed by a previous council action a few years ago and should also be removed from the proposed amended ordinance. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ally. Um, all right, so again, we discussed this. Um, I just wanted to point out that, uh, again, as Ms. Paulus pointed out, this would not take effect until January of twenty-three, so we're talking two years- So we're talking two years from January. In addition to that, if you do the numbers, it's a $6,000 annual increase. And that would equate to about $1.80 per house, per parcel on an annual basis in Minutrista. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. So with that, any questions or comments?
This is Shannon. And I spoke up at our work session meeting, but this is a council meeting. And this is, I'd like to just make a few comments here. I'd recommend considering this perhaps a year from now and see what the economic climate is then because a lot of these financial impacts that people in our community are feeling are long-term. Some of these people in our community are closing their businesses that they have had for decades. And those kinds of economic hits don't just bring back to life in a year. So I realize there is never a good time to increase our own salaries, but I am also very sensitive to the very real financial difficulties people in our community are facing. And I don't think any of us do this for the money. It's a community service from my perspective, and I trust it is for everyone else on the council. But I cannot, in good conscience, increase the council and the mayor's compensation when I know my neighbors can't pay their mortgage, that they've been laid off or have had to close their businesses. I just can't do that, not right now. So I can't support this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have comments? All right. With that then, council, what is your pleasure?
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All right. Mr. Molliter made a motion to approve as presented. And is there a second?
I'll second that. This is Pam.
All right, and Ms. Mortensen made a second. Any further questions or comments? Again, I'll just make a few comments. Yes, I agree. I think we all do this to serve our communities. We don't do it for the money. I mean, that's not it at all. But I think, again, $1.80 a year isn't on a per, you know, average house property, isn't going to break the bank. And again, this isn't going to be in effect next year. It's not going to be in effect the following year. It's not going to be until '23. If this was going to take effect next year, I definitely would not be in favor of this. But, and again, because of the situation that COVID has created for many people, we can always take a look at this sometime next year or even in '22. We can still have an opportunity to revisit this without having any impact on the budget before it would take effect. So with that, I would be in favor of it. I think that it's long overdue. With that said then, a motion has been made. And was there a second? Pam, yes, you made that second. So we'll take a vote. Ms. Bruce, you'll vote no, I'm assuming?
Yes, I'm voting no.
All right. And then we have Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Mr. Molliter?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So motion passes 4-1. Ms. Bruce dissenting. All right. With that, this is an ordinance. So do we have to, when do you, what do we do with the ordinance? Do we have to publish? Print it?
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, yes, I can, it doesn't have to be put in the paper this week. We can put it in the paper next week. It'll just go into effect whatever published date of the paper will be.
And since it won't really go into effect until January of '23, it can go in at any time?
Correct. But I'll get it in either this week yet, or if not, it'll be next week.
All right, and then do you need?
January 3rd.
All right. And then do you need a motion to, I mean, is there, do you want to publish it by title and summary? How do you want to do that?
No, it's not that large, so we can go ahead and just type, or publish the whole document.
All right. And then just for clarification, item number three will be removed? And that was the meeting stipend?
Right.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you very much. So with that, that concludes our business items, and we'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Baroni?
Yes, Mayor and Council. For the new incoming council members, I will try to be in touch with both of you via email here in the next day or two. I will be trying to establish a schedule in order for you to meet with city staff in an orientation process. I don't know exactly how that will look. It could be socially distanced, but face to face. It could be a go-to meeting call like we're doing tonight or a combination. But I will find out with an email your availability and give you some dates and time. Hopefully, you can give me some dates and times that, so I can establish these orientation sessions with each of our department areas. And the other reason I'll be contacting you is to let you know about establishing your city email and we'll be providing a city cellphone to you as well. And the only other comment I have is just hope everybody has a good holidays coming up here in the month of December. And our next meeting will be on January 4th, 2021.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just have, is, are there any other staff reports or anybody? Mr. Baroni, do you know?
I don't believe so unless somebody wants to pipe up and say something, but I don't believe so, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I just have a quick report. I just spoke with the fire chief in Mound, Chief Peterson, and we will be trying to coordinate a fire district meeting sometime in January. The mayor in St. Bonnie is new, so there'll be a new mayor. And we thought we'd wait until he came on board. And then the other thing we'll also be doing, probably, again, we're going to try and coordinate it with Chief Falls and myself and the new mayor in St. Bonnie, our pub, and Mr. Baroni, and also Brenda over there in St. Bonnie, where we'll try and coordinate a public safety committee meeting as well. So that's about it that I have. Pam, anything?
No, nothing new with WCC. Hoping to get back into meeting next year.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot of those. Thank you. Ms. Bruce, did you have anything?
No, nothing.
All right, and Mr. Molliter?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Trumperland?
A couple things. See, the Pioneer Sarah Creek meeting for November was canceled. It sounds like we will have one in December, next week. And I attended the November 23rd planning commission meeting. Two of the three items that were on the agenda were forwarded, which you saw on the consent agenda tonight. The third, which was for an interim use permit amendment at Minnetonka Orchards, was tabled after the meeting, public meeting was opened and there was input given from some residents. It was then tabled until their January meeting, as they don't have one in December. The reason it was tabled is that notices were sent out to residents within 500 feet of the location. And I guess per rule, it should have been 1,500. So there'll be another mailing going out, and the meeting then will continue in January. So we may see that in our February. And just wanted to also wish everyone happy holidays and stay safe. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Again, happy holidays to everybody, staff and council. And again, thank you, Shannon and Mike, for your service to the city. Now, stay safe, everyone. With a motion, we can be adjourned. This is Pam. I'm going to give that to Mr. Molliter. That is his last motion. And I'm going to give the second to Ms. Bruce as your last motion here. So with that, all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Molliter?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned. And we will see some of you in 2021. Thank you. Good night.